Zoning Board of Appeals, on Tuesday I swap the order at 6:30. Mr. Secretary, if you'd be so kind to roll call. Oh, before we start, excuse me, and I apologize, I'd like to welcome Tara Moody to the board as an alternate member. With Tara, we appreciate you all stepping up and volunteering. I hope you enjoy it. I have, it's a lot. It's a nice position. So, thank you for volunteering and welcome to the board. Could you, I'll call Mr. Secretary. Chairman Hills, here. Doug Stevens, present. Andy Rockett, here. Sean Collins. Chuck Curtis, here. Curtis, I'm so sorry. No, you're good. Tara Moody.
Here.
Ralph Williams, here. B.J. Pharaoh, going once, going twice, absent. Very good, thank you. First item on the agenda is ZBA 25-001. If you'd be so kind, Mr. Secretary, to read that into the record.
Nicholas Turnberg, 183 King Road, Summers, Connecticut. Appeal of Cease and Desist Order issued by zoning enforcement officer for commercial operations/vehicles and earthwork.
Okay, we are now going to enter into the public hearing.
For the record, I wanted to state that I did send notice to a butterset to get a mailing since our July meeting was canceled due to lack of quorum.
Okay, so noted, thank you. Okay, you are...
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Robert Kane, I represent the property owner Nicholas Turnberg for 183 King Road in Summers. First, start off, just thank you all for being here tonight. We do really appreciate your service. I am a member of the local ZBA in Newington, so I'm familiar with the process. So, really Attorney Donnelly, the managing partner at Blockburn Donnelly, he is out of the country on vacation, it's been scheduled for a while. We're here to request, respectfully request, a continuance for that reason, so that Attorney Donnelly may be present to present the appeal.
What do you think?
Should there be a motion on the floor first?
Can I get a motion to continue, please?
I move to continue.
Discussion.
I'll second it. Did you second it?
No.
Take the date, in time.
Well, we're not quite there yet.
Are you not prepared, Attorney Kane, to make the case on behalf of Mr. Turnberg?
I'm prepared to make the presentation if the board requires.
Our only concern is it's, this is ZBA 25-001, which might give you ink that it's been pending for quite some time. But, um...
Andy?
This is a second continuance?
It's like the fourth.
Of course, some of it was, some of it was...
Two of them are ours.
Yes.
Two are theirs.
Okay.
If I may, I believe in July Attorney Donnelly was prepared to go forward and that was the lack of the quorum on that date.
Or a lack of a five mem, we had a quorum. As a ZBA member, you know, you could have gone with four members, you had the option to go with five, and your client chose to go with five.
Understood.
Any other discussion?
I'm comfortable with proceeding. You always extend professional courtesy to people for their personal circumstance, or, you know, attorneys are busy, they're pulled into meetings and stuff like that, but after two of theirs, I'm comfortable saying, let's do it.
I'm agreeing with that. Any further discussion? As an alternate, you won't be voting. All in favor?
I'll just have the most...
Motion to continue, right?
Continue. All in favor of the motion to continue? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Staying?
Just to clarify, we're talking about continuing, having the hearing tonight, correct? Continuing it tonight?
No, we're, no continuance, we're moving forward.
Moving forward to having it tonight?
Yes.
And an in-favor vote says yes, we have it tonight?
No, in favor is we continue.
Oh, right, okay.
I move to continue, so if you'd...
Just to put it on the floor.
Right.
Making a motion does not...
Motion fails.
You need him to swing. You have the floor. We shall move forward. Thank you for clarifying.
Just to make the record full, I believe Attorney Donnelly requested permission to attend via Zoom, which had not been granted.
Um, I recall that, but we don't do Zoom. Maybe he can phone in if you would like, to get him on the phone with you.
Well, I think, I think he had sent an email to you regarding the hearing, I'm not sure what exactly was the contents.
It's been a while back and forth, I fully expected them to request a continuance and a little bit of...
Oh, okay.
Now, as we see it during this meeting, so we can coordinate the zone. Sorry? Do want to move him later in the meeting, so we can go to the next one, give him time to call sit up? Yeah, hang on just a minute, let's see how to...
What was he talking?
We would be willing to, if the board agrees to move this later in the agenda, if he wants to be able to try and get a hold of his other attorney.
We can move that to the foot of the, for the agenda.
Do I have, is that agreeable to you? Or do you want to proceed?
All right. He's in Portugal, so...
So, I had six hours.
Time difference?
Yes. It's 12:30 at night.
AM.
AM.
Just a moment to confirm my... All right, we will attempt to contact Attorney Donnelly and offer the telephonic participation with the board that was involved in that.
Yeah. Do I hear it? Make a motion that we move the agenda item number one, let's blow up my screen, which is the, here it is. Make a motion, we move agenda item ZBA 25-001, Nicholas Turnberg, 183 King Road, we move that to item number four on our agenda this evening, or three on the agenda, and we move to the second.
Second, I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Staying? Motion is unanimous. We will now move on to ZBA 25-003. If you would be so kind as to read that into the record, Mr. Secretary?
Frank Poirier, 9 Roberts Street, Summers, Connecticut. Appeal of Notice of Violation from the ZEO regarding classification per Section 214-3.3B of the Summers zoning regulations.
At this point, I am going to ask the vice chairman to take care of this particular one, because I have a personal relationship with Mr. Poirier.
Okay.
And I would not be comfortable in seeing as how we have five other members here, I would appoint Tara to, as a voting member on this particular case.
Okay. You read it into the record? Ready? Okay. Ford, how are you?
Thanks, Frank. Where do we begin?
Make your pitch.
All right, so the, the regulation is pretty cut and dry, in my opinion, in regards to the interpretation of what is or isn't a commercial vehicle. It states pretty clearly that it is by plate classification or registration classification. Even goes further in and identifies types of plates, classic, combination, passenger, et cetera. The truck is a 38-year-old vehicle. If it was a commercial vehicle, they would have kindly given me a roughly $800 registration instead of the $155 registration. The idea that it's commercial is based on the fact that it would be used for business, it would be used to essentially make money, that's not what it's being used for. The initial intent was to fix it up and use it for the American Legion as a alternate parade float. It does have a 12-foot flatbed on it, so the plan was to eventually fix it. It's not being used in any commercial capacity. The vehicle weight rating is 17,500, that's what the manufacturer rated it at. And, so I guess, I guess when I was approached by it, by Jen, the discussion was, I have a second truck in the driveway, it's a 1998 Dodge Ram, it too has a gross vehicle weight rating of 10,500, which is over what her initial threshold was for classifying it as a commercial vehicle. It's got the same plate class of a classic. Both registrations say classic registration with classic or historical use. Neither one of them have, or are used for any business. If helping people out and, you know, doing dump runs and things of that nature for them is considered business use, then we got bigger fish to fry, I think. But the, I made a pitch to the assessor's office upstairs with Jen, no, excuse me, not with Jen, with Karen, and asked her for her opinion based on what was, what they had received from DMV. And her email back to me was, "In Connecticut, a vehicle classified as commercial, if the gross vehicle weight rating is 26,001 or more, or if the vehicle is designed to carry 16 or more persons for business, is used to transport freight or merchandise, or is classic plates are generally not available for commercial vehicles. The Connecticut DMV has not classified your 1987 International as a commercial vehicle since it is not used to transport merchandise, freight, or persons for business." The other, the other aspect was that, you know, if it was being used as commercial, there's a number of different inspections it would have to go through. I would need a medical card, at the very least, to use it commercially because of the weight that it's capable of carrying, whether or not it's being used in that capacity. None of those things were required, so I don't understand really why we pushed so hard for this, just to say that it was commercial. We have a lot of other vehicles in town that are very clearly commercial, both by registration and by branding, and we do nothing about those, so we live in a very complaint-based zoning enforcement. And if you are lucky enough to not have somebody complain about your stuff, then you can pretty much have what you want, until such time that they complain. Kind of what it feels like, so that's my pitch. I trust the fair and impartial judgment of the board.
Anything else that you wanted to present, any speakers, or evidence, or anything like that?
I have pictures of it, if you'd like to see it. I don't know what that will do you. So, I'll pass, start by passing those around, that's the two registrations for both vehicles.
We'll have to keep these and return, return them, we've got to make copies afterwards for the record, so.
Okay.
I actually have copies of all of that anywhere.
You do, you have copies of all of this?
It's all, yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. Anything else?
I have the pictures of the truck, if anybody's interested in seeing that.
If you think it at all, it's submitted, if you think it's extraneous, up to you. Thank you. Do you have copies of these?
Uh, I'm not exactly...
Okay, if you don't mind, that's fine, yeah.
The other piece that I'll point out is that the truck was parked, that's where the pictures, those pictures were taken, that's not it in its current status. Those pictures were taken back in March, before I procured it. It sat in plain sight on the south side of 83 for well over nine months, with no issue. Got moved into my neighborhood and it became an issue. Just, there's a whole separate protocol to even be able to register the truck as commercial, which is far more invasive than just registering it as a passenger vehicle. I went through the, through the motor vehicle listing that was supplied to me by the assessor, there's a number of vehicles that are registered with similar plate class as combination or passenger-type vehicles that have higher than 10,000 gross vehicle weight limits. I mean, for the longest time, Connecticut was notorious for essentially forcing somebody with a, with a pickup truck to register as a combination plate, just because it could be used for both, both sides. It was, that was common ground. It wasn't until probably about maybe eight years ago, they started allowing you to choose the type of registration that you selected. You kind of got forced into it, so it is what it is at this point.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Any, anything else to submit, or? Okay. We're hearing a motion from the board?
I'd like to hear it, please, yeah.
I'd want to have a motion then, then...
Usually I give my presentation first.
No, no, you've got to go to the public hearing.
Before you?
Yep. Everybody's got, then the audience.
Oh, right. Sorry, folks. That was going to be a lot of discussion. Go ahead.
Showtime.
All right. Jennifer Roy, zoning enforcement officer, for the record. I will give you guys all a copy of the notice of violation, a copy of the zoning regulations, and his registration, Frank's registration. Pretty much you have a copy of everything that's here, and photos. Yes, this was brought to my attention via complaint, as most of the time, that's what happens in town. We don't drive around looking for violations, I have to go mostly driven by complaints. My job is to interpret the zoning regulations, and as such, when I read the zoning regulations, it speaks to different types of vehicles, it says registered passenger-type vehicle, registered commercial-type vehicle, farm vehicles, and unregistered vehicles. So, in my opinion, as written in the violation notice, anything over 10,000 gross vehicle weight is allowed if it's in a garage. This gross vehicle weight is 17,900. So, due to the weight size and the registration that Mr. Poirier brought in, down at the bottom of the registration, the section that's filled in says number eight, other than passenger style motor vehicle. So, given those facts, I ascertain it's a commercial vehicle, can't be parked in the driveway.
Questions for Jen? How many commercial vehicles are registered in the town of Summers?
451.
You want a list of them?
No, I'm sorry.
That's relevant.
Well, I'm just curious, how many, you've been complaining, how many complaints have we received from the zone?
Uh, it's happened before, I'm not prepared off the top of my head today to give you addresses and times, but it's happened, including people with, you know, larger pickup trucks, pulling like seal coat equipment and such. And frankly, the assessor never came to talk to me about it, and even if she did, her interpretation of assessing vehicles is different than, you know, my job is to interpret the zoning regulations as written.
No, I'm reading the same thing.
Not anything, I'm not putting down anything information that she's provided a resident, or to me, I still would have to read our regulation and see how I interpret it.
And we define inside, because I'm also reading, so we define inside storage as four walls fully enclosed, or is inside, how do we define inside?
Well, I don't think that our zoning regs have a definition, inside.
No, I'm just asking how you interpret it as a...
Garage, in a garage, in a building.
In a, in a building, four walls contained.
Yeah. Not seen from the street.
Not seen from the street.
Other questions for Jen?
No, I did have one, I know you're going to take comments from the public as well, but I did receive an email, lengthy email, from Sarah Bollinger, 13 Roberts Street, outlining her objection to having the truck there, pointing out his commercial endeavors. So, she's opposed to granting the appeal.
Okay.
Basically, Sarah Bollinger, 13 Roberts Street.
All right. Anything else?
I don't think so.
All right. Members of the audience?
I've never been to one of these, but we're, it's kind of a joint event, we got this letter to come here today. I don't have a problem with it.
You have to just take your living address for...
Yvonne Howe, 30 Maple Ridge Drive.
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Yvonne Howe. 30 Maple Ridge, my two sons live there as well, but we're not opposed to it, so I just came to...
Are you in a butter?
Okay. Ralph asks, are you in a butter or in the neighborhood?
Neighborhood, I guess, it's not, I can't... One house away, but I'm on the outside.
Okay.
We got the letter, so...
Okay. According a neighbor. Anything else? One, one final shot, Frank, anything to add?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Motion from the board.
Move to close the hearing?
Well, thank you, Ralph. Move to close the hearing.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, Derek, yeah? You're voting on this?
Yes.
Yeah. Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Now, motions from the board?
I'll make a motion to grant the appeal of Frank Poirier, 9 Roberts Street, Summers, of the notice of violation from the ZEO regarding vehicle classification per Section 214 hyphen 3.3B of the Summers zoning regulations.
Second? Second?
Second.
Doug's second. Discussion?
I think that, um, I thi- I think the su- the size of the vehicle, the fact that it's outdoors in a residential neighborhood, regardless of the, of the classification of the license plate, I, I believe that, that it's in violation of the regulations, and I believe that the zoning enforcement officers' interpretation is correct.
Okay. Any other comments? No doubt you're going to make a comment there, so.
No, I, I would concur, based on this, this, on this one.
Sarah?
So are we just determining if it's a commercial vehicle or?
No, we're determining whether it's a violation of the zoning regulations.
They can park there in the front.
Pardon?
That they can be parked at the front of the house, not the rear, right?
Right. I, I mean, again, our, our job is to look at the zoning regulation and look at the facts and compare the facts to the regulation to determine if it's a violation.
The main zoning court of appeals is a little bit misleading. Unlike a court of appeals, we cannot void a regulation. We can only determine whether or not the zoning officer's action was in accord with the regulations. They're there, only the zoning commission can change the regulations, so. Or grant, or, or grant special permits.
I would say it's a matter of discussion. I think, I think it is interesting, it's, it's a point worth noting that the definition of how we are defining commercial vehicles in the town versus the state, I think is something that, you know, that to footnote in the future as we look at certain regulations and just understand why the difference and the continuity between state and town. Uh, the definition of something, so we can try to remove the confusion should somebody, uh, choose to register in such a format. I, I, because these are also up to free for interpretation, is, um, the definition of indoor, and I'm not trying to be funny, but I think that you could say if it's four walls, does, does a tent, a, a semi-permanent structure with four walls on it contain, the defin- definition is inside? And does that provide Mr. Poirier with an alternative? Um, I think it's, as a citizen in this town, and this is where you kind of have to decouple where we sit as a board versus being in the community. Um, and I think it's unfortunate that it is a complaint-driven nature. I'm very, you know, well aware as well, in this town, of other commercial vehicles that are sitting in driveways that where this would contain it. So I think it's, it's unfortunate that it is complaint-driven and that individuals are are brought forward in that way, and there's not consistency in the town, uh, for this. And, and that's where I struggle frankly.
Well.
But I know tonight before, the facts are before us, and we need to make the decision based on the regulations that are, the way they're defined and how Jen's interpreted.
No, we visited in an utterly unrelated, uh, matter in a recent hearing, the question of a manure pit up, and, uh, you know, and, and what came to rest and where we actually overturned, uh, or disapproved the zoning officer's decision was the a regulation that stipulated how many cubic yards of manure could be kept. I could think about four or five very large scale farms in this, in this town that probably produce more than that every week, but the question is, nobody complained. This was a case where it was brought to our attention, and we're not saying, well, because somebody else got away with it, we must let them get away with it. No, the question, we are supposed to apply the regulations.
I, we're saying the same way.
Or, or uphold the zoning officers' deter- if we determine that her determination is valid.
I'd like to bring up one point. If you're talking about four walls, probably nobody in this room remembers about when Mill Hanners put in his project up off of Turnpike at Sunset. La Chance, the guy that, that put in the roads and stuff, Mill couldn't pay him, so he gave him a lot. And he parked his pickup in, and they complained about the pickup being commercial, and the day he runs out. So he put a fence around it. And that's, so, to me, that's a precedence. If that's the way you want to go, if you put a fence around it. It's been done before, but sixty years ago.
I don't know if that would work in, I don't think if that would, would work in a residential, it would be.
It was a residential.
Dec- dec- uh, but in the density of Robert Street.
But I think that's the importance of the definition, right? Because we, the, what I hear, which I think is fair, is that the regulations are written in one way, and the interpretation are left up to the zoning enforcement officer. All the more reason when cases come forward that we make it out like, hey, this is no different than the manure? Just the discussion, right?
Yeah.
There was a precedent sent back then, that was late sixties, early sixties. Yeah, I would say late sixties, something like that. You put the fence around it, and they let him do it.
Any other comments? But my, my comment generally follows the boards. You know, one of the difficulties of this position is we, we have to make decisions, and then we might meet at some bar, and it's like, you know, um, but, but we agree to serve on this because we're tasked with taking what our zoning regulations are and applying them to the facts. My opinion generally concurs with the board, that it's very straightforward. It's, it's, to me, it was cut and dry. When I read the complaint, it seemed cut and dry, and, and nothing persuaded me otherwise. I hear your, your, um, I guess complaint about state and how they register vehicles. I hear your complaint about others parking commercial vehicles on their thing, and yet, um, yes, we are complaint-based, but that's how this system works. You know? If Sean's my neighbor and he puts a big thing, I have to complain, or nobody cares. So I, we can sympathize with you, but that doesn't mean that, that we will decide with you because we sympathize. So. Any other comments? Okay, again, to reiterate, if we vote to approve the application, that means Frank can continue to park his vehicle there. We vote to deny, he cannot. Okay? All in favor of the motion?
Repeat that again.
Yes. So if we vote yea, we're saying, yes, Frank, you may park your vehicle there, right? And the zoning enforcement officer is wrong. If we vote nay, he cannot.
Yeah, hold, yeah, hold it. The zoning enforcement officers.
Right, it's confusing sometimes. Okay? So, all in favor of the motion?
So, what about a fence?
Well, that's not our issue. Not, 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 I don't want to talk about it.
Okay, all right, I see where you're coming from.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, it's not our issue, but it's not our issue. Okay? All in favor of the motion? All against the motion?
Nay.
Nay. All abstain?
Abstain.
So, two abstentions? Three in favor? Obviously, a three opposed, motion does not carry. Okay. Thank you.
What, what's the, uh, what was the vote?
Uh, three against, two abstentions.
Who were the abstentions?
Doug?
Doug.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Racket. So, um, and this one going forward, essentially the appeal is granted. So. Frank, you are able to keep your truck there for the time, right?
No, no, no.
Got to be four. Got to be four.
No, the, the motion was to grant the appeal.
And we did not.
And that move was lost.
Okay, I'm sorry, very good, all right. All right, that's right.
Yeah.
My bad. Okay, let's move on to Z B A twenty-five dash zero zero four.
Mr. Secretary, if you'd be so kind to read that into the record.
Christopher Jezz, fifteen Lacabana Road, Summers, Connecticut, requesting a variance from section two fourteen hyphen three point four, minimum side yard setback of twenty-five feet to allow construction of a detached garage fifteen feet from the side property line in the A one residential zone.
Thank you, sir. Come on up. Before we get started, do you have a proof of notification of the butters?
Uh, I don't have it with me. Sorry.
I believe I sent it also when I did a mass mail.
Yeah. I think I have it. If I need to.
But it has been sent, right?
There, I can meet you.
You can confirm that, Jen?
Yes.
Okay. There has been, uh, the proof of a certification of the butters.
Afternoon. Evening. Hi.
Yeah, as long as you promise to shake my hand after the hearing.
Yeah, it's fine, whatever it is. I play sports, I understand how it goes. Good. That's fascinating. So, good evening.
Just, just don't put your map over that, that's our microphone. Remove it.
To avoid that? All right, so. So, Christopher Jezz, live on fifteen Lacabana Road, Summers, Connecticut. Uh, lived here thirty-seven years, formerly of one thirty-five Stevens Road. So, love and appreciate the town probably the same way that you guys do. Goal tonight is for you to grant me a variance to build a detached garage, within fifteen feet plus or minus of the property line. The regulation is twenty-five feet of the buffer. So, the reason why I'm asking for that, the hardship is, is fifteen Lacabana Road, uh, it's a five acre parcel. It's set up on the hillside, it's a beautiful view. But the topographical geography of the, of the house and the way that it's situated is such that it's kind of making it very difficult for me to add parking there. And, uh, so with that being said, the house is built in two thousand twelve. I didn't build it. Uh, I bought it in two thousand twenty, and, uh, I have a growing family at home. And, uh, so family of five, three kids. And, uh, so I'm trying to plan ahead for them to have their vehicles and then have people coming there. So I need additional parking. With the topography of what I have to work with, it's a very steep topography, which I'll show you. Uh, I really have no flat area. They picked the only flat area that they could to build the house on. In the backyard, I have the well and two propane tanks. And so that's really not the reason why I can't put it back there. And in the front yard, I have the pool, and I'm just simply not going to take the pool out to put a garage in. Right? So, understanding those things, uh, I think that, you know, the impact to the neighbors, right, is, is that, I only have one neighbor, and that's consultant with us here tonight. And, uh, because of the topography of the land, which I keep referencing, because it's, if you, if you don't really know the area, if you haven't been up there, it's very, very steep. Um, the way that it's situated, Chris's, or my neighbor's property, is actually so tall into the hillside that this structure really won't be seen from this property. And even a future owner of that property, if it wasn't Chris, this really wouldn't kind of hinder anything that they were going to do on that property, because they couldn't build or do anything of that side. So.
That neighboring property is remarkably smaller either as I recall. Isn't it?
No, 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 it's, it's big.
Like forty acres?
Yes, forty acres. Uh-huh. So, um, I really don't see, and, and the way that I look at it, is any kind of impact to my neighbor, and, and quite frankly, friend of him, I, I would never kind of impose anything that would be a nuisance to him. Or a town member for that matter. So, um, if you want, I could explain the plan to you, that's what I brought here tonight.
That's what you sent out, Jen, right?
Yeah.
I, I saw in what you sent out, there was a consideration for trading property, or there was a consideration for like, you take fifteen feet, or whatever the, the actual footage was.
Right.
And is that, has that been a discussion amongst you both, or you hoping I'm saying enough from him?
Yeah, it, it was discussed. Um, and to be truthful with you, it's, it's really like, there's a lot involved with that.
Yeah.
Lawyers and drawing on paperwork, and it's really a headache that neither him or I want, and I really didn't want to put that. At a certain point, that's where I thought was the easiest part.
Right.
To be quite honest with you guys. And then as I looked into it and talked with him more, he was really uncomfortable with it. You know, and I says, look, it's making you uncomfortable, let's just, let's go to the, let's go to the town and see if they'll grant the variance. Again, the impact to the neighbor is nothing at, at this point. You know what I mean? So, and again, I, I just have nowhere else to put it. It's going to cost me some money to put this into the hillside. I get that, but again, I really don't have any other option to put it close by and to have that parking.
So which, which lot? Are you the last lot on the lot?
He just called the second.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, right, it pretty much almost encompasses your home.
Yeah, I go up there.
You've bo- both lots, correct? You have the parcel that your home is on and the parcel of budding?
That's right.
Yeah, but, but where he wants the garage is not next to his budding property that he owns, but the name.
No, yeah, I know, I understand that. I've, I've looked at that, actually, I can see clearly where it is, and I understand why.
Yeah. Yeah. Beautiful area, it's just, it's just a flat land. Absolutely not.
I'm sure you didn't get it for the view.
That, that carve out for the sale of, I presume that was your surveyor's or attorney's suggestion as a fallback possibility?
Um, no, I, I haven't consulted with an attorney at all. Uh, it was kind of just what I thought was going to be the easiest, because I wanted to, I thought coming here would be a little bit more difficult, to be honest with you. Not that we're intimidating or anything of that sort, but I just, I thought that it would be easier just to, to buy that section of lot, or, or property, and then just be within the the town variance there, or than what the, what the rules were.
Guess again.
So, learn as I go, you know what I mean? So, that's what I had to work with. Uh, you guys all seem like you're pretty familiar with the property of the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was that little triangle that, that was my only question mark.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there anything here that we didn't see in what you submitted to?
I could just speak for the record, Jennifer Roy, that we did go over possible scenarios either aside, and given the topography of that property, you know, that's a fairly, you know, valid hardship, and in most cases, someone isn't building right next to him where it drops off, and, and, and he's, and he drops off and goes up, one way or the other. No one's going to build on that corner. And only a corner of the garage really infringes on the setback, and, and then it goes in, and then going through all of the soil testing and not my planning, oh, commissions and lawyers and deeds, it's, I thought that we had pretty valid reasons to have come before you guys for like ten foot.
Well, the only quibble I would have, and it's really more properly addressed to your neighbor, aren't you? Is here, hello? Uh, is whether having this would in any way impact any building plans you have for your property? As we've already determined, it's a fairly large chunk of land.
Chris Morris, one thousand seven hundred and fifty, you know, I'm in favor of this, no problem having Chris build there. We're talking over fifty percent slopes, which is, you know, it's hard to walk them. You're not going to be building there at all. You know, and honestly, it's so much more of a pain than it kind of stated to be, a lot on the configuration for such a tiny amount of property. I mean, we're talking about many awards and deeds and all that, and expenses to go with it. So, you know, I'm, I'm really in favor of allowing you to do this to variance if it's all possible.
I'm just, I'm just looking forward to the eventual irony of you coming forward with plans for your property and saying that we created a hardship for you by letting him do this.
Not, not at all, hardship over there is existing.
I was going to put the zip line for my kids.
Probably already all be building it all, so.
Be hard to stop.
Anything else, Chris?
No.
Any further questions to Chris from the board? Any comment from the audience? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Sean?
Second.
Doug, second, any discussion? Doug, seconds. Any discussion? This is just a call.
Call, yeah.
On favor?
What was it?
To close the hearing. Aye, to close the hearing.
Right, motion.
Aye, opposed, staying. Motion passes unanimously. Can I get a motion to approve ZBA twenty-five dash zero zero one?
Make the motion, we approve ZBA twenty-five dash zero zero four for Christopher Jezz of fifteen Lacamba, Lac, how you say this, Lacabana Road, excuse me, Summers.
Lacabana.
Request, requesting a variance from section two fourteen dash three point four minimum side yard setback of twenty-five feet to allow for construction of detached garage fifteen feet on the side of the property lined to the A-one residential zone.
Second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Discussion?
I, when I look at hardships, I, I always ask myself, is there anywhere the, the homeowner could reasonably move it that complies with the regulations? And I can put the garage on this side instead of that side or something like that, you know? And if so, then it's a matter of their aesthetic as compared to a land-based hardship. In this case, I, I live on Blue Ridge Mountain, right, right down the road. It's a land-based hardship. And even then, I said, be built? No, no. There, I don't think there's any place a person could reasonably build it because of the land.
Now, not a little help from Dyna.
Yeah, yeah, right. So in this case, I, I satisfy some. It's a hardship.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying. Motion passes unanimously. You have, Jen has to put an ad in the paper and then you have to wait fifteen days when that ad appears and it'll be in the JI. And after that, you're free to start.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Awesome to meet you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Hope you bought the kids something nice to put in the garage.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. You too.
All right, moving on back to ZBA twenty-five dash zero zero one. Let us open that public hearing. The notice has already been read into the record. You've got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just.
Yep.
Anyone you want. Do you want my client up here in case you want to ask your questions?
That's your phone?
Up to you. All right. Once again, Robert Kane from Blackburn, Donnelly, on behalf of Nicholas Turnberg and East Meadow Enterprises LLC, one eighty-three King Road. I'm going to pass out a copy of a slide deck PowerPoint presentation. Okay, so, we are here as a result of two cease and desist orders dated November twelfth and January thirteenth. We filed a no's appeal in relation to the January thirteenth cease and desist order. There were three alleged zoning violations. The first was related to performing earthwork exceeding one thousand cubic yards. The second was operating a commercial log processing operation and the third was storing commercial vehicles on the property. So, I'm going to give a brief background on the property and then get into each issue in sequence. Mr. Turnberg purchased the property March seventh, twenty twenty-four, is in an A-one residential district. It is forty-three point eight four acres, largely forested. There's a delineation of the property there for your information. Moving on to the next page, background forestry operations. So, you saw the forty-three acres, quite a bit of it is forested. So, Mr. Turnberg does in fact harvest and process trees at the property, which is of course admitted, permitted in an A-one district as an agricultural activity as of rights. You can see a excerpt of the A-one residential district table from the zoning regulations. In addition, just to, just for extra support, general statutes, section one dash one subsection Q specifically mentions forestry as included under the definition of agriculture. And then you can see the definition farm, attractive land paying five acres or more with a minimum of three acres used for agricultural purposes. One eighty-three King Road easily meets those marks. So, there have been a few cases in Connecticut on this point. The most on-point case would be Kawa, the Hartland Zoning Board of Appeals. And I'll provide you with a copy of that opinion at the end. But essentially, that case affirmed that harvesting agricultural products, trees, conducting forestry on your property constituted agriculture, a permissible agricultural use. Moving to the next page, background town regulation of property. So, this is a little bit repetitive, this slide. My apologies. The farm also falls under, sorry, the property falls under the farm classification under section two point two and three point two of the Summers zoning regulations. And so, Okay, sorry. So the nature of the zoning regulation violations were that Mr. Turnberg was engaged in a commercial operation. He was conducting excavation over the permissible limit and the farm vehicles. So, he was doing, he was prepping the area for where he was going to store the commercial equipment, which is permissible because of the agriculture and forestry aspect to it. All grading has been complete on the property. So at this point, that issue is essentially moot and it was all linked to the agricultural activity, namely the forestry. And just to be sure, the conservation commission looked at these forestry operations and determined that they were in compliance with their jurisdiction and their regulations. And there's really no issue that the conservation commission identified with the work going on at the property. The next slide is just a copy of the January thirteenth cease and desist. Apologies, it did not reproduce very well. So once again, the issues here are whether Mr. Turnberg is running a bona fide agriculture or forestry operation on the property. The second issue is whether there is sufficient evidence in the record to uphold the allegations that the earthwork reached an impermissible level and was not incident to his agricultural operations. And then the third issue is whether the farm vehicles violate the regulations regarding accessory storage of vehicles. So as I indicated earlier, both in the Summers zoning regulations and general statutes, section one dash one subsection Q, forestry is part of the definition of agriculture, which is as of right in A-one districts. The, so, whether the harvesting of the trees from the property is a commercial operation, I don't think is the proper inquiry. I think the inquiry is whether he's engaged in something that constitutes agriculture under the zoning regulations and the general statutes. And so the next slide is reproduction of the Summers zoning regulations. You can see there in bold, I added the bold, that forestry is specifically spelled out, the Summers zoning regulations refer to general statutes one dash one subsection Q. Again, that includes forestry. I've bolded forestry there in that first line. I won't belabor that point any further. And then the next slide definitions, twenty twenty-nine Code of Federal Regulations, section seven eighty point two zero one. So this is a federal regulation. So, the board is not necessarily bound by a federal regulation, but I think it's strong support that, you know, forest management and forestry lumbering operations includes harvesting from your property and processing, carrying into woodchips, lumber, et cetera. So, that concludes the argument related to the first issue, whether the operation of the log harvesting was permissible as an agriculture or forestry use. Moving on to the second issue with the earthwork regulations, section eight point four. So the earthwork conducted on the property complies with the Summers zoning regulations and the permitting requirements. So, much of the earthwork was simply maintenance and premises improvements. He bought the property March of twenty twenty-four. So, since then, he's been prepping the property, you know, where he can store his farm equipment, where he's going to harvest, where he's going to store the products in the interim. So, that all falls under the agricultural use, which is permissible under section eight point four subsection B four of the Summers zoning regulations. And again, I pointed out the conservation commission review because I think that's strong evidence that he was adhering to environmental safeguards and erosion control. You know, I would imagine the conservation commission would have a keen eye towards that if there's any, anything that needs to be remedied with that respect. And then as far as, you know, we dispute the amounts of the earthwork. And again, the inland wetlands and watercourses agency retroactively approved the site work. So I think that is something for the board to take into account. Additionally, again, this is earthwork in relation to agriculture activities, which is permitted as of right under the zoning code eight four B four. And so moving on to the third issue, storage of commercial vehicles, which is three, section three point three of the Summers zoning regulations. So, you can see an excerpt of the table here under A-one C. Farm vehicles on a farm are permitted outside, but they shall be kept, not be kept in front of the residence or within the front yard setback. I don't believe there are any allegations that they were kept in such areas. So, yeah, as I belabored multiple times, the harvesting of the, the trees is forestry, which constitutes agriculture. These vehicles that he's using in these operations are farm vehicles because they are used for forestry, forestry. And as you can see, three point three does not require zoning permit for the storage of farm vehicles. So that concludes the argument for the third issue. So in conclusion, my client respectfully requests that the board overturn the zoning enforcement officer cease and desist order and find each of the following. That the property is being used to conduct bona fide agricultural or forestry activities that are permitted as a matter of right under the zoning regulations and that no violation of zoning regulations, section one point four occurred. That's all, the harvesting of the trees, everything related to that, the woodchips. Two, that the earthwork that occurred at the property is part of the bona fide agricultural forestry activities are permitted as a matter of right. That a special permit was not required to conduct these activities and that there is no violation of zoning regulations, section eight four. Again, that ties into the harvesting of the trees, forestry practices. And three, that the vehicles parked on the property were farm vehicles, engaged in these permissible agricultural activities and that no violation of zoning regulations, three point three occurred because these were agricultural farm vehicles engaged in forestry. And I would just request, because I believe the violations are three discrete violations under three separate codes of the regulations, that the votes, we could have votes for each discrete violation or topic. All right. With that, that concludes my presentation. So, turn it over to the board.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, refer to these farm vehicles. Are these vehicles that are used for no other purpose than for the operation of this? Or are they, are they used in conjunction with your, your landscaping business as well?
They're used for hauling and harvesting forest products.
They don't, they don't leave the property?
Yeah, they have to leave the property to haul forest products to market or to pick them up from one property and bring them to another.
Okay. And that brings up another question. You acknowledge that at least some of these trees that are, these harvested trees are not in fact from that property?
Yes.
Okay. But they're being processed.
Yes. Just to follow that one question. Are, where are the vehicles registered? What state?
Massachusetts.
In the business, registered in?
Yes.
Massachusetts.
I also own woodlots in Timor-Land in Mass.
Yep. Would it be nuanced, when it comes to firewood and this is quite part of educating, when you're, when you're processing, you're foresting and you're harvesting wood, there's firewood, then there's mulch. Or like, take us through, like, what, what are you doing with the wood? Like, what's being processed?
So if it's firewood, it's being cut, split, and then sitting to season, if it's mulch, it's being grounded or fiber product, or if it's logs that are going to get, build the boards or getting loaded on trucks and hold up.
So it's any one of those three type of variables when you're talking about harvest?
Yeah.
Or processing the wood?
Yeah.
And are there different considerations for that wood in terms of how it needs to be treated or transported when it's coming across state borders?
Yeah, so logs aren't regulated, cut into firewood, you can't haul from Mass, like that, otherwise.
Okay. So you have a couple of skid loaders or something up there, trucks, log trucks coming in now?
Can I ask the extent of it? I mean, if I, if I have a log splitter, which I do, and, and my neighbor says, we got a shipload of logs, can I buy a cord for you for a hundred, you know, a couple hundred bucks? I'd sell it to him, my neighbor. That, to me, isn't a commercial operation, but this sounds like it's way more than that, doesn't it? Because you do it as a business.
Yes, but it's forestry. Forestry falls under agriculture. So, all farms are businesses.
So yes, you do it as a commercial operation?
Yes, all, all farms are commercial operations in a sense.
Thank you. I'd point out that the regulations don't prohibit commercial operations.
A-one residential district.
Right. And do you think it's more, it's, it's a farm, it's a farm that's. Yes.
Right.
Forestry is farming.
Great. Question?
Question?
Yeah, go on. In your presentation, how, how did you guys take account that more than eighty percent, and, and I'm going up to eighty percent, Jen, keep me honest if my numbers are off, because I'm looking at the zoning map. Based on what I see, more than eighty percent of this property sits at a flood plain. How, how was that?
That's really a good review of the conservation commission.
Understood. But, but my question is, I didn't, I didn't hear that as a consideration anywhere here, right? So there's, what I'm hearing is, hey, after the fact, conservation commission went in, gave, I guess, I want to make sure I have the words right, inlands and wetlands, watercourse agency retroactively, is that the town of Summers inlands and wetlands? Watercourse agency came on property?
Yes.
Yes, but my understanding.
And I'll explain after.
Okay.
From a town's perspective.
Okay, great. So, but in your, in your consideration, when you purchased the property and when you've done your legal assessment, how was the flood plain taken into consideration in terms of any of these activities?
Uh.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
That's not, yeah, it's not really pertinent to this issue.
Have to pass it now. And, and, so sorry, I'm clear. Conservation Commission didn't say, you know, God bless you and everything that you're doing there. They said, what you're doing here is not interfering with the wetlands, with the flood plain. Is that correct?
Yes, the exhibition went that it was outside of their jurisdiction.
Right.
And any forest products harvesting that we're going to do on the property can be done to a certain extent inside lawn areas.
All right. I just want to clarify, I think Ralph asked this, but you did say you're bringing in outside lumber and processing it on the property?
Yes.
Thank you.
One thing about the, the movement of a thousand cubic yards and all that, the only thing you did was bring in gravel to lay down to access your operation?
I made a parking area. I, there was an existing hay and cornfield. I stripped some of the top floor and pushed it up into piles and then seeded and stabilized them and spread gravel in that area to mark the forestry equipment.
Selling any earth, earth materials?
No, there's big piles that we pushed up and then seeded. Yeah, we just pushed it up and seeded it.
Any other questions?
But you can't sell on site.
Yeah. And that's why we just pushed it to the side so we could put some gravel down and.
Any further questions?
So, you're bringing, so.
So, you're bringing, so you have a sawmill or something there too?
No, I don't have a sawmill.
No, so are you just cutting the wood up for firewood or...
Firewood or mulch, or, yeah.
Mulch or logs, okay.
Anybody else?
Is that a big chipper or something, and cut at least a skidder or something, hauling the logs or whatever?
Yeah. Anybody else? No? You have anything further?
So there was some discussion of whether the trees were coming from off of the property or on the property. I would just ask that the commission, the board draw a distinction as far as if they find a violation, what exactly the violation constitutes and that anything from the property is not a violation.
There you go. Anything else?
The Reed case, the Reed case shows that you can bring in offsite forest products.
My paralegal has reminded me of the Reed versus zoning Board of Appeals case. The citation is 24 Connecticut L. Reporter 186, and I would refer the counsel to this case for, actually, this, this is a very important case because this is a situation where the products were brought off of the property, onto the property at issue, and the court found that it was, that it did constitute agricultural activities. So in court courage...
What was the caption of the case?
So it's Reed versus Zoning Board of Appeals.
We need a copy of that.
REED.
REED.
Yep. It was, it's unreported in the Atlantic Reporter, but the citation is 24 Connecticut L. Reporter 186, and the Westlaw citation is 1999 WL 179633.
When she opened a civil inquiry search in the Connecticut court system? I'll take a look later.
It will come up on Westlaw.
That's all. Anything else?
So just briefly, that case was, he was conducting some operations onsite and then bringing, I believe it was tree stumps from offsite, incorporating them into his operations, and the court ruled in favor of the property owner. And with that, we conclude our presentation.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Jen? Yeah? Thank you.
I'd like to show you some photos, because I wasn't prepared. I didn't think, and I thought we were going to continue, but I'll enter them in the record.
So we've looked, both sides equally.
I can show you pictures too. They're on my laptop. I can run upstairs if you want to, or, it's just pictures from June 24th when I went.
So I was fully prepared and I want to present. It's more of like, we let the partner, you know, do the...
No, I thought that the board was in consideration.
Okay, you're done.
There you go. Jennifer Roy for the record, zoning enforcement officer. I guess I'll start with the fact that my cease and desist doesn't speak to forestry or agriculture use. Nowhere in here does it say you can't perform forestry or any agriculture work. That's a separate issue that went through Conservation Commission, cutting the trees down. I'll initially set these in for the record. These maps are from a new program we have called NearMap, and basically, it's an every six month time lapse flyover of property. And this will show you that in September of 2024, it was nice and lush and green, farmland, as they said. But then it shows the overlay, this down in the corner, October, we started doing some April, a lot more earthwork. And then these are further from April 2025. Our regulations for earthwork, and this, we started early on with Mr. Turnberg stating that, you know, if you are exceeding 1,000 cubic yards of earthwork, you need a special use permit. Farming, you have a right to farm, agriculture is a right, a permitted use as a right, however, a commercial operation requires at the minimum a special use permit. And including Grower Direct, for example, acres and acres of land, they've gone before the zoning commission and got special use permits for their main property, for their property on Four Bridges Road when they wanted to build the greenhouses. Because you're running a commercial operation, you have big trucks coming and going, commercial trucks, large commercial trucks, which I have photos of. And again, everything has, you know, Massachusetts plates, there's employees there. I went in detail and extensively discussed this with Attorney Rangelina, our town attorney, prior to and after issuing the cease and desist. These, these vehicles that I witnessed on the property in the spring and in June are not related to having some equipment there to cut the trees down, which is forestry. So none of this has anything to do with a cease and desist for forestry.
It's for the earthwork.
It's for the earthwork, which is clear in the maps, and for all of this commercial equipment that's there, coming, going, whether he's, you know, hauling out firewood that he's created on the property, whatever he's done, I maintain you need a special use permit at minimum from the zoning commission if they see that it fits the regulation for a special use permit, because there they can put restrictions on it, hours of operation, the days of the week, you know. This was also complaint driven, it was brought to our attention, normally we wouldn't know what's going on in all these acres of land way back in the, you know, corner of Summers, but there are neighbors right there that had to endure the trucks coming and going, the machinery pushing around all the earthwork, all, you know, through the winter, the fall, the winter and summer, so.
Yeah, Andy. So part, part of, one of your issues is that you believe it ceases 1,000 yards, and your evidence...
I believe it did. And he's already, this is all done.
Right. And that's your evidence that you want to inspect the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you show us again the photos there?
Yeah, I have, so I have some printed from the beginning, besides the over aerial maps. You can certainly pass this around, I mean, this is part of our record here. You've got verms, piles, all of these large piles of soil that he's created, and then they're all here, photos. This is just an excerpt of his business on Facebook, more piles and equipment. That's from December. Things and such. Just passing around a few lines.
Yeah. Okay. Jenna, may I follow your question?
Yeah.
At our la, it was not July, it was the meeting prior, I believe Attorney Donnelly had granted you permission to do a site visit, kind of an unannounced site visit. Did that take, were you able to do that?
It did, June 24th.
That was the June 24th visit?
Yeah.
And was there any new discovery there following?
Additional or different trucks and vehicles, dump trucks, I'll show you two if you want. I have a print on there. So that's one. Trucks, equipment, there's like four others.
Are those, are those...
All right, we're going to save time.
Okay.
I'll come back off.
All right, so that's...
Just another, there's, you know, dumpsters, dumpster, another commercial truck with equipment on it, which, if you're using the equipment there for cutting trees, it wouldn't have to be on the back of the truck. I don't know if I'll see him.
Make this with the real photo that he had in his presentation.
Oh, just some more photos.
Let him walk this in.
Dump trucks.
Which is originally, you know, if you put the right side up, which is what I put.
Can I ask a question of the...
May I ask a question, Mr. Turner?
Nick, when you brought, when you purchased the property back in March, I went through the record, it looks like it went back and forth for a little bit, but you finally, I think, acquired the property in March. Were you aware that you were in a residential A1 zone at the time of the purchase?
Yes.
And were you aware of the zoning regulations in the town of Summers?
Yes.
So, my question, why, why didn't you apply? What prohibited you from applying for a special use permit?
Because this, it's all forestry equipment and forestry's agriculture.
So your understanding is like, I didn't need to apply for a special use permit because you were working under the, the understanding that I was doing all forestry?
Jen, what about the commercial vehicle aspect? He's saying it's all agricultural related equipment. This is not decided through...
Not in my opinion. In my opinion, he's running a commercial operation from this property that, again, at minimum would require a special use permit, which would regulate the storage of the vehicles, the operation, hours of operation, the coming and going.
This is April.
Discussion with the town attorney, my counsel, was that the vehicles and the equipment that's there is not that which would be if someone, you know, logging, doing forestry on a property, where, you know, typically you have a parcel, and yes, you do forest, you do forestry, you've got down, you do the logging, either done. This is evident to me that it is just an ongoing running the business operation from this property, based on the few times that I've visited the property and seen different equipment and...
You mentioned this was complaint driven initially. Have those complaints continued?
Ah, they were, yeah, I mean, they're, they've kept us informed of what's going on, and, you know, it was most in the beginning, brought it to our attention, to my attention, and Joanna Shapiro's attention, given the wetlands on the property.
Any other questions?
You got that, pretty good sized bulldozer there pushing around dirt.
That's no longer there, that was there when we were creating the parking area.
Yeah, okay, so that's not there now. And you have the truck there that dumped the offload.
Oh, yep.
Yeah.
That we also used to haul stuff and stuff on the tracks.
Yeah. You got our store of topsoil, because you can't sell it.
Well, that's, those are the, the big piles in the picture, that we pushed all of that direction and seeded.
That's the topsoil, yeah. And you can't sell, you can sell that in town, but you can't sell it out of town. At least that's the way it was years ago.
You can't sell it at all.
And I didn't, that's what now we're here for. I just pushed it to the side and seeded it.
Yeah, when you're...
It used to be you could sell the topsoil in town, but you can't sell, but maybe that's gone.
This is about...
About the forestry, yeah.
Not forestry, it's not about forestry at all. It's about performing earthwork without a special use permit, you know, for greater than 1,000 cubic yards and for running a commercial operation, multiple commercial vehicles, different vehicles on different spot checks there.
So you brought in the gravel from somewhere to park the vehicles?
Yeah.
Yeah, then there are, obviously, you're going to, you're hauling out logs and stuff, you're going to have a commercial truck hauling.
Well, they're, they're forest, they're trucks hauling forest products and forest products are agriculture, so...
Triaxle dump trucks that dump like trailers or something, they're not little trucks.
No, but they're, they're farm vehicles.
Yeah.
It's one, I'm a little confused now that the work is all done on the excavation, correct?
I would assume, I don't know if he's going to do more work or not, but...
Right, but what, the stuff we're talking about?
You still can uphold a cease and desist.
Yeah, okay, no, that, well, that's basically my question.
Which would be, which would be you can't do anymore without a special use permit.
Right, okay, very good. Because I had to clarify that in my very simple mind.
No, I guess I would just, you know, interject a little further, you know, my opinion of farm vehicles, the trucks that are cutting down the logs, the equipment that's moving the huge logs, or, you know, tractors that are watering and doing irrigation, those are farm vehicles, like, these are big dump trucks that are taking stuff on and off the property.
And that stuff is woodchips and logs and forest products?
Which is running a commercial operation. Because, example, Grower Direct can't get a vehicle and pull all of their point setters and say, which is harming, you can't just tell, you know, so that's my opinion, my view of difference, I'm not telling them you can't harm, I'm not telling them you can't forest or log.
Essentially, you're saying if he gets a special use permit, he's okay.
Well, I'm saying that it's, it's something that at minimum needs to go before the zoning commission to see if it fits the special use, you know.
Yeah. Any further questions for Jen? All right, thank you, Jen. Now, would anybody from the audience have any comments, please? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, Marlon?
You coming too?
Yeah.
You pay taxes in town, so you can have a seat. You guys can have a seat.
Renting, right?
Renting. You bought that chair.
Dave Gaskell, 200 Watchout Road. I'd like to address a letter to the committee of our concern.
Mr. Secretary.
First and foremost, would you like us to read that in the record? Please.
Could you be so polite?
Hi, today I'm here over the misuse of commercial operations at 183 King Road, a clear violation of our town's zoning regulations and on our quality of life we are enduring. I support progress, people making a living, but not at the expense of our health, safety and environment. The activities at 183 King Road blatantly disregard summer zoning laws, specifically 1-1.2, which is designed to protect public health, ensure safety, and preserve the character of our town. What was once a peaceful residential neighborhood has been transformed into a commercial industrial site. The property at 183 King Road is zoned for residential use, yet it has been converted into an industrial hub, creating significant disruptions and dangers for our neighborhood. Bullet, heavy industrial machinery, log trucks, bobcats, dump trucks, cranes and woodchippers operate almost daily, starting at 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. at times, six days a week. Bullet, a 20-foot-high, 100-yard-long wall of mulch, leaves and woodchips, tree branches and stumps now looms over our property line, bringing foul odors, airborne dust and health risks from the decomposing materials. Bullet, thick diesel fumes pollute the air from multiple commercial pieces of equipment running, forcing families to keep their windows shut and endure persistent smells, noise and vibrations from this equipment vibrating the ground to our home and possibly damaging the structural integrity of our house. I have in the past eight months seen alternative motives with this property use, which is zoned A1 residential. I believe Nicholas has not been forthright or honest with his intended business use of the property. We all were to believe it was going to be a third location in Connecticut, expanding its two business locations currently in Massachusetts, only to be used, excuse me, only to be used as storage of equipment and materials. A cease and desist order was issued, but to no avail. Deliveries of logs, mulch and equipment continue arriving this past winter. Now I understand he has been appealing to the zoning board to receive a special use permits to harvest wood within the wetlands of this property and use the property as a commercial processing center for a lumber product wood milling facility. Furthermore, in the Conservation Board hearing minutes from January 8th, 2025, Turnberg stated that he was merely, quote, "laying down gravel where he will be storing equipment and materials", unquote. However, it is clear that this is not just storage, it is an extensive extension of his business processing and logging operation. Even more concerning, he outright stated that he did not feel the commission needed to know his long-term plans for the land. His dismissive attitude toward full transparency raises serious concerns about the legitimacy of his current claims. This is not responsible business practice. We recognize the wheels of regulation turn slowly, but every day of inaction further erodes the health, safety and property values of all adjoining properties. We have raised our families here, built our lives here, and cherish the peace and beauty that make this sound so special. Thank you for your time and commitment in this matter and upholding zoning rules and regulations.
Thank you, Earl. Okay. Lawrence?
and cherish the peace and beauty that make this sound so special. Thank you for your time and commitment in this matter and upholding zoning rules and regulations.
Thank you. Okay, Lawrence.
May I also add that I believe purchasing a prior farm piece of property and just keeping a few cows on it to consider it still being a farm and operated as agricultural is not what's going on here. What's happening is it was deemed to be converted to a commercial industrial processing business, a third extension of his current two businesses in Massachusetts. This piece of property abuts my property, and that is where the concern lies, which, this is you here, this is me here. So 40% of my property is abutting, a little bit more, but what's being currently affected is only 40%. That may continue with the permission that the Wetlands Commission gave him to go into the wetlands and to harvest more wood. That'll be behind my property then. So now 60% of my property could very possibly be subjected to the noise and everything that's going on. Hiding behind a farm, agricultural, to run a business should not be allowed in Summers. That concludes my statements for, and I wish he was more forthright, with his neighbors, knowing I abut most of his property. And when the activity started, it was, let's put a 25-foot-high mulch wall across this guy's property, which, again, keeping down the dust, possibly some of the noise, but the eyesore, eyesight, versus looking out your backyard and seeing a field of flowers or corn or something, completely opposite of what's happening here. So, keeping a few cows on your property and calling it a farm and agricultural is not really what's happening. What's happening is it's being turned into an agricultural, commercial business, if you wanna continue to use agricultural hidings behind a farm, per se, when it's actually just a commercial industrial business of logging, which logging does fall under agricultural. But in this sense, that should have not been deemed a farm after he purchased it and started this type of commercial activity. That should have been re-regulated as no longer being a farm and just being an A1 residential with 40 acres of flush land. Because he is not doing any farming whatsoever.
Yeah, he's breaking.
Logging is part of the agricultural. And in order for him to keep his status of it being a farm to fall under agricultural, there's a few cows left on two acres of the property. Which now is a nice new fence that keeps the few cows corralled in the front. So, unfortunately, that's what we've been dealing with since the property was purchased and the activity started.
It's horrible, because the smoke comes in our yard, loud. You have that big, long field of mulch and leaves, 30 feet high. Isn't there a variance that you can't have fences or anything abutting another person's property at higher than 80 high? It smells, it's, it's been horrible.
If it stopped, if he cleared the property and used it just to store a few vehicles, to store some material from his other facets of business, that's fine. 7 o'clock every morning, here comes the trucks from outside of the state, honk, honk, notifying the workers there that we're ready to load, unload, and start this 12-hour-days' business, because it does not stop until 7:00 p.m. And at times at 9:00 o'clock, there's still be a truck or two pulling in, six days a week. There's...
You've been here for a while?
27 years.
And prior to Mr. Turnberg purchasing the property, what, what are you familiar with this property? What was it prior?
A farm, which coroners grown in that field, occasionally some flowers. And that was about it. I think he did broccoli one year. But that was it, it was always farm land. And there was no problem with the farmer running his tractors, running his equipment. I mean, that didn't happen 12 hours a day, six days a week. It, it happened when, you know, turned your fields and planted your plants and then, you know, continued on. And you do have to realize that, I've looked into Nicholas Turnberg a little bit, and he has also stayed certified for pesticides. So is that going to be also stored in the building on the location? And he has other certifications that would deem very irresponsible to even store anything close to the Skanick River, the Watchout Brook, and the wetlands there.
No offense, I agree with you 100%, maybe, but that's, we gotta keep it on our...
And I understand that, but if approvals are made, as you say, these meetings are by complaint. And if nobody sees what's going on in the activity, it very well could be sometime in the future, because he is a very well-rounded businessman, and he does have certifications in many, many things. And one of them is to, you know, have other things going as part of his business. So unless there was guarantees that, oh, no, you know, this is only solely what I'm doing, there still has to be some limitation to buying, purchasing a farm and just making it something different than what it really is. And I'm sure, you know, he could be a nice guy.
Just, so you know whether I agree or disagree. Just so you know, we can only act on what specifically was brought in force. Right, just, just so you understand.
Yeah, understandable. Just, just, this first time I was able to air?
Yep, no, that's fine.
And resolve the extensions of, you know, the meetings that were going on. And, you know, if it was nipped earlier at the bud, then we wouldn't be having this extended conversation about that the activity, it would have been solely, you know, this is what's going on and, you know, is there something we can do to, you know, limit that, per se, or, you know, not make it as grand of an operation of what it's turning into be. And in my personal opinion, farm vehicles aren't 40-feet-long logging trucks and bulldozers that can scoop up 10 yards at a time of soil and rock. Most farm vehicles are unregistered vehicles that are stayed on the property and don't leave properties unless the farmer has another property in the town. They don't run from state to states. So, all these registered vehicles out of the state of Connecticut, I can't see being deemed as farm vehicles just because you purchased a farm as a third extension of your business. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Jen, I have a follow-up question to Jen, can I do that?
Absolutely.
Jen, just a follow-up question, just tying two things together, because we had a hearing earlier in the night about commercial vehicles and farm. Is there a definition on farm vehicle, what classifies a farm vehicle in, in the town of Summers?
Speaking to our definition. Um, so we do have a section 2.2 in our definition, agriculture in terms, fairly large for the whole thing. It does define as agricultural soil, dairy, forestry raising, or harvesting of agricultural or agricultural quantity, et cetera. Farm, a tract of land, it doesn't say farm vehicles. Tract of land containing five acres or more with a minimum of three acres used principally for agricultural purposes, a farm, named, or premises, used for raising, keeping livestock, and other domestic animals, and provided by these regulations. The term farm includes buildings, building accessories there too, nurseries, orchards, ranges, greenhouses, hoop houses, and other temporary structures or other structures used primarily for the raising and as an incentive to preliminary farming operations, the sale of agriculture or agricultural quantity. So that's the definition of farm, it doesn't say farm vehicle. If that helps.
And then I guess I want to follow, is the definition of a farm vehicle, and you may not know this, and we'll just have to go with what our knowledge is. Does it, is it interstate? So if a vehicle's registered in the state of Massachusetts as a farm vehicle, does that carry it to state Connecticut?
I mean, that's state, this is, so our zoning regulations, as best you can, you can only define so many words without it being an entire dictionary, right? So our regulations try and outline certain things in definitions. So it doesn't, you know, I could go to vehicle and it would say what a vehicle is.
Yep.
Right, and then it says farm, this is what a farm is, and these are agricultural terms. That helps me.
It doesn't, but I understand what you're saying, okay.
Right, like, it's not gonna describe a, you know, X-size dump truck or the other trucks and equipment that are on there.
Okay.
I don't even know what they're called, boom trucks or something, or the trucks for the women. Yeah, more explain what type of vehicles they are, but...
Any further questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to close this public hearing?
Some.
Moved by Andy.
Can I respond to anything?
What's that?
Can I respond to anything? The CEO's presentation?
All right, go ahead, before we close.
I just want to point to page 155 of the Summers zoning regulations. It's Section 8.4 Earth Regulations, Subsection B, allowed with no zoning permit. Subsection 4, normal agricultural operations, going back to the excavation. This is a 43-acre property, so there are gonna be large vehicles, there's gonna be a lot of dirt and gravel moved around. I, what I saw in the pictures, I do not think was abnormal for someone prepping their site for forestry. So I think you'd be hard pressed to find a farmer come in and say that that was an abnormal level of site prep, given the fact that he's conducting forestry. And I just have to call attention to General Statute, Section 1-1, Subsection Q again. Forestry is explicitly included under agriculture and farming. And, uh, with that, uh, we get that before.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Let's start it. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstaining, motion passes unanimously. I agree, I think we need to break it down into three different motions, so can I?
I'm not sure that we do.
Well, I think we should.
Well, first of all, our first order of business is to determine whether you grant an appeal about, of an order citing specific references here, which, as Jennifer pointed out, don't include agriculture or forestry. So we could bring that up in our discussion, but I don't think it needs to be part of our motion. Our motion needs to be whether or not we're granting an appeal.
Give me a motion.
I make a motion to grant the appeal of Nicholas Turnberg, 183 King Road, Summers, Connecticut. His appeal of the cease and desist order issued by zoning enforcement officer for commercial operations/vehicles and earthwork.
Motion by Ralph, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sean, discussion.
I don't mean to exclude you, but I was talking to Michael.
Yeah, actually, if you guys could, I can go back into the orders.
This is a classic case to me of...
Thank you.
It's not black-letter law, for us, you know what I mean? So, well, I know agriculture's permitted. I know you need permits for commercial operations. But where do you define them in there, you know what I mean? It's not gonna be exactly, they're not gonna say, well, if the dump truck is this size and this size. You know, it's not gonna be that specific. So we're called upon to make judgment calls. And, and a couple things for me. When, um, Nick said, I just paved it and put some gravel down, I was like, that's reasonable to me, you know what I mean? You would expect something like that. But when you see the photos, I mean, I just know about buying a yard of dirt for my, fill in my yard or so. That looks to me like more than 1,000 yards. I mean, this is a manure question we had, you don't know about that, it's a great case, you should, you should follow it.
I live in the town.
You just missed it.
You know, but it said, to me, in my inexpert opinion, it's like, seems like a lot of land. Should've got it used for, okay, so he won't do it anymore, that sort of move. But the same with the agriculture thing. It's like, when does it go from agricultural activities are permitted, which might mean a farmer harvesting some green beans and taking them to a shop rate to sell or something? But, it's, so it's a scale issue in my mind. And in this case, to me, that scale seems large enough. I, my interpretation is more commercial operation than it is what, what, the, what's allowed as an agricultural op- operation.
Well, the tipping point for me is the appellant's acknowledgement that some, I don't know whether it's one or two, or 80% of the logs being processed here aren't even from this property. And at that point, it strikes me as we're not discussing forestry anymore. We're discussing processing.
Right.
You know, it, you know, it's like, all the difference, all the difference in the world between, you know, you know, have, have, having cows on your farm and then having a rendering plant.
Yeah, right.
So it strikes, I, I do not see anything here, that and the scope of the vehicles and the scope of the earthworks that you mentioned, I don't see anything here that gives us grounds to say that the zoning enforcement's officer acted outside the scope of what the regulations say.
I agree with you on that, yeah.
Any other comments?
I have nothing more to add.
Pardon?
I have nothing more to add.
No, I tend to concur with that myself. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Abstaining? Motion fails. All right, we have the approval of the minutes.
Make a motion, motion to approve minutes.
Second. That would be the, from the meeting of June 10th.
About the June minute meeting.
Ralph's motion, Doug's second, any additions, corrections?
I would correct the, throughout the spelling of Attorney Donnelly's last name to, I believe it's D-O-N-N-E-L-L-Y. Very good. Anything else?
Yeah, there's a version of the, the, uh, the notes that I sent, a second version to Jen, that says who is it submitted by, because I was, I sent in for Ralph as a secretary. I'll work on my spelling.
Okay. I can't remember if, did you put on there? Hmm, they're not subject to, uh, they're not considered official until...
No, but, but that's better out of, we can, we throw it.
All right, very good. Anything else?
Yeah, okay. Nope.
All in favor?
As amended.
Opposed, abstaining?
Abstaining, only because I was in here.
Very good. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Doug, motion by Sean. All in favor?
All right.
You adjourned at 8:12.